Okay, we'll call this meeting the meeting's order. Please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Pledge of allegiance.
Aye.
Public.
One.
Okay, welcome to our July sixth council meeting. Councillor, start with the roll call.
Councillor Shalata.
Here.
Zadi.
Here.
Demas.
Here.
Tate. Windorf.
Here.
Halter. West.
Here.
Savage.
Here.
Mayor Como.
Here. Um, councillor's first order of business, I would entertain a motion to approve the revised agenda before you.
So move your honor.
Do you have a motion or a second?
Second.
Second's been called all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Let the record show no opposed. Uh, if your microphones are loud, that's mean, that means you're using them correctly. So come to speak to the microphone, make sure that it is turned on and closed to. Councillors, uh, I'd entertain a motion also to the approved approval of the minutes for the city council meeting, uh, of July second, two thousand nineteen.
So move your honor.
Do you have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Councillors, this is going to bring us to the appointment section of our agenda, of which we have one. And Mr. President, members of the council, I submit to you the name of Mike Huelin to fill the unexpired term for Danielle Torpey to serve on the Urban Renewal Agency Commission.
Council, Mike Huelin has stepped up to serve on Urban Renewal Agency Commission. Do we have a motion to approve?
So move, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. West. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Shalata. Roll call, please.
Councillor Demas.
Yes.
Zadi.
Yes.
Shalata.
Yes.
Savage.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Windorf.
Yes.
Mayor Como, you have your appointment.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council, and thank you Danielle Torpey, uh, for the, uh, the work you've done on the, uh, Urban Renewal Agency and she well. This is going to bring us to the presentations and, uh, proclamation section of which we have one presentation, uh, Commercial Terminal Modernization Project Progress and Funding. Uh, Mr. Devin Brubaker, Southwest Miami Regional Airport Director, will you turn it over to you, Devin?
Good evening, Mayor, councillors, uh, once again, thank you for the time this evening. Uh, I wanted to take the opportunity to give you an update on where we're at with the project, uh, the Commercial Terminal Modernization Project, and then also, uh, have a conversation with you, uh, or a presentation with you regarding, uh, a funding request that's later in your agenda, um, and answer any questions that you may have. To start out, just an update on the progress, uh, for especially for the new councillors that may not have been aware of what we did last year, um, before you guys took office. Um, we underwent a two-phase project in partnership with Wyoming Department of Transportation. The first phase of that was a terminal area plan. And basically, when you think about the airport where all of the buildings are, that's considered the terminal area. So what we did is we did a study, um, to evaluate the next thirty years of development in that terminal area to determine what needs to be done, where do we need to put infrastructure, where do we need to have roads, water, sewer, where would we build hangars, where would we build, whatever else there could be on the horizon over the next thirty years. So we completed that. The next phase after that was a terminal feasibility study. And that's where we went in and looked at our existing terminal, looked at what the design standards are for the FA for commercial terminals, and made an evaluation of, uh, code compliance and different things like that to determine, um, do we need a new terminal? Is it even, uh, a, a, a need there? Um, we completed that, and it was determined that our terminal is undersized by almost fifty percent. Um, and that is when we came before this council and the county commission and asked for some funding support to help us continue down the path of design in an effort to secure, um, to better our chances to secure supplementary AIP. So Congress back last March of two thousand eighteen had authorized and appropriated a billion dollars of extra money to be given to airports, um, for capital projects. They gave it out in two rounds. The first round was a, a short round for things that were ready to legitimately have shovels in the ground on day one. Second round was projects that could be ready within a certain amount of time. We applied for the second round. There was a total of two thousand seven hundred and change number, I can't remember the exact number of projects that were submitted by, uh, fifteen hundred airports around the country. Those projects totaled up to about eleven point one billion dollars, and they only had a billion dollars to give out. They awarded a hundred and twenty-seven of those projects for a total of seven hundred and ninety something million dollars in the second round. Uh, unfortunately, we weren't selected for that. Fortunately for us, Congress has authorized and appropriated an additional half million dollars that they're going to be announcing in the next couple of weeks. And they have also started the process, the House has already approved, and the Senate is expected to approve with the president's signature to follow another half billion dollars of funding. And on top of that, over the next three fiscal years, there is an additional three billion dollars that has been authorized. It has not been appropriated yet. The expectation is that a half billion will be appropriated in each of those years, um, is what we're hearing out of Washington, not the full billion, but a half billion. So what it boils down to is there's still discretionary money out there, and there's still money available for our project. Uh, to go back a little bit to what we've accomplished since, this, uh, council and the county commission, uh, partnered with us with a very welcome and appreciated funding to help us continue on the design process in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars total, which allowed us to can complete the conceptual design phase and come up with a more refi- refined budget estimate. That process should be finished within the matter of the next couple of weeks. We will be having a public meeting, we're working with the chamber to host a business after hours type event at the airport to unveil the terminal design and renderings to the public and to all of you and to everybody else that cares to see it. Uh, so where we're at today, as we are completing that process, which includes environmental work, it includes, uh, um, final design work, final budget estimates and all those items, is we got a request, uh, that I had forwarded out to the mayor and Matt and Glenise, um, from, we got a request from YDOT and the FA to be able to commit to them whether we can, how much money we can come up with locally to match federal funds and how quickly we could say yes. And that survey, while it looked informal, the three that received it can attest, it was, looked like a pretty informal survey. It carries a lot of weight with the feds and the state in determining whether or not they will call us for a project. So I met with the mayor, met with Matt, um, last week, and we talked about what it is exactly we were looking for, and that's what's sitting in your, uh, new business later in this meeting is a funding request. While I talk about that funding request, I want to be clear, there's two different pathways that exist to this funding for this terminal. Pathway one is what we're here primarily to talk about today, and that is the hope that we will get a phone call from the FA that we're going to get supplemental discretionary funding. Pathway two is that we don't get that phone call, and the project is completed when it's scheduled right now in twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. That, those funding models are clearly stiffer and separate. If you look in your letter that I included, it kind of breaks down in simplistic terms, what the difference between them is. The project with supplemental discretionary funding can happen immediately. Without supplementary disco- supplemental discretionary funding, it won't happen until twenty-one, twenty-two. With supplemental discretionary funding at the amount requested, the local match on the project to do a eighteen million dollar project is where the estimate is today, the local match is four hundred thousand dollars to do an eighteen million dollar project. Without supplemental discretionary funding, the local match is going to be in the five to six million dollar range based on what we know today. So what, the reason I want to bring that up is because I want to make sure that the city, the county, the residents, everybody understands what we're going for today, but what the worst case scenario could be if we're not successful in securing that supplemental funding. So I want to make sure we're being transparent about that because we have a couple of years till twenty twenty-one, gives us time to put all of our collective minds together and find a way to make this project happen and come up with that local funding, whether that be a six penny ballot initiative, whether that be a loan, whether that be general fund money, whether that be a combination of all three of them, I, I don't know what the answer is. I can tell you that I'm, I'm very confident that I can go out there and find thirteen million dollars in grant funding to go towards that eighteen million, even without supplemental discretionary funding. The, the, the wild card is how do we come up with that five million dollar separation, that five million, uh, difference there? I have a spreadsheet that, it's an interactive spreadsheet. I was hoping it was going to be easier for you all to see, but what I'll do is talk you through it. Um, this spreadsheet is how we map out our funding for this project. And our goal is to try to minimize the local match as much as possible, much like we did with the general aviation facility. So the screen that's up right now, and I'll be more than happy to share this with you guys via email, but before I did that, I wanted to kind of talk you through it because I didn't want you to get lost in it. Um, what you see over on the left-hand side where my cursor is, is if we get supplemental money, that's how much we expect to get, which is nine point six million dollars. The next line below it is two million dollars in entitlement money, which is the million dollars a year that we're guaranteed to get from the FA based on our passengers. So we would commit two years of that to the project. The next line down is three million dollars from YDOT. Right now, they have a maximum grant allowance for terminal projects of two point five million dollars. However, in our discussions and our lobbying efforts with YDOT, it is expected that they will increase that max to three million dollars by the time this project happens. The next one down is a three million dollar allocation from the Wyoming Business Council. We have not applied for that grant, so I want to be clear, so we're not claiming that we're guaranteed to get that money. I'm confident that if they have funding available, that will be successful. They have funded two other terminal projects around the state, commercial terminal projects, and they have funded our general aviation terminal project. So there's a prior precedence there. I'm confident in my grant writing capabilities that if they have funds in the bank, that we'll be successful in that pursuit. The total budget for the project as we sit here today is that eighteen million dollars. And it's hard to see, but it shows right over here in this box, a four hundred thousand dollar shortfall with supplementary money. Over here, these numbers, hundred and seventy-two thousand for the county and eighty, uh, six thousand for the city, is what would be left over after we give you guys your credit for what you've already invested in the project. For those of you that were sitting here, when we talked about that funding, I sat here and said, the money you spend today will be accounted, it'll be reimbursable, or it'll be counted towards the local match on the project at the eligibility percentage of the project. As we sit here today, the project is seventy-one percent eligible for federal funding. So what that means is your sixty-six thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars that you have encumbered or expended to date on this project will result in a credit of forty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-three dollars towards the local match of a hundred and thirty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three, which I believe is what is in your new business today. So ultimately, your new business decision today, if you choose to approve it and move that money over from air service over to this project, number one, I'm not asking for any disbursement of those funds, that, that money is there if we get the federal funding. If we don't get the federal funding or the federal funding changes from what we have in our model, I would be back before you talking about that. But we won't be requesting a penny of that until we know we've secured the funding for the whole project. Um, number two, it won't end up being that full amount. If the numbers stay as they are today, it wouldn't be the four hundred and thirty-three, it would be that eighty-six thousand based on where we sit once again today. So, um, it's a, it's a fairly complicated project. When we did the GA facility, we had eleven different grants to make that happen, and it only cost us, cost us, uh, thirty thousand dollars of local money on a six million dollar project. We're hoping to try to mimic that as much as possible on this project. Now to flip it over, if you take the next tab, what we've have programmed here is instead of nine point six million dollars of discretionary, we have five million dollars of discretionary, two million dollars of entitlement, three million of YDOT, three million of Business Council, leaves us five million dollars short on the project. What that equals out to with the credit of what you've already spent would be basically one point six million from the city and three, uh, point two million from the county. Now, this is where I want to be abundantly clear, our board has asked me to pursue the idea of six penny project. We understand there is a very long, long list between all the municipalities in our county of projects that should the commission approve a six penny ballot initiative for twenty twenty, we know we have an uphill battle, but we're willing to pursue that, and we're hoping to partner with one of these entities, whether it's you or the county, to make that happen. So it's not a general fund request, it's a six penny project. But once again, there's a lot of steps between today and then. I was reminded very politely and, and correctly that we're very premature in talking about that, um, at this level, but I wanted you all to know that we're thinking about it, that we're trying to find a solution there, so it's not an impact on the general fund of any entity. So, um, project's absolutely critical. I can, I could go into that great detail, why the project's needed, but I think I've done that with most of you. For the new councillors that haven't been part of those conversations, I would be more than happy to sit down with you one-on-one or two-on-one, whatever you want to do, and have more in-depth conversations about that. Um, and I'm, once again, obviously happy to answer any questions you have today. Um, what we're hoping to leave here today with is, uh, your commitment that the money is there, should I get a phone call from the FA that, hey, we got nine point six million dollars for you, that I can confidently say, yes, we'll take it. I need two weeks to the next council meeting to get the, uh, get the agreement signed, but yes, we can take it, because if I can do that, it keeps them from going to the next project on the list. So that's what I'm here for today, not asking you to expend any money yet. It would, it just needs to know that you guys support the project, and if we can pull it off for the four hundred thousand dollars of local money, uh, for an eighteen million dollar project that I have, your support. Um, just so you're aware, the county commission this morning approved their portion of the funding, um, unanimously, so they have, uh, they are on board with this. So happy to answer any questions and, and mayor and, and even to the point, Matt, since you were in the meeting, if I missed anything that I should have said, please give me a hint of what it is so I can make sure I hit on it, so.
Councillor Zadi.
Question. Okay, so looking at, we were saying the six cent, so if we're looking at, there's five million dollars shortfall that potentially would be a six cent budget.
Mm-hmm.
With the timing of everything, though, if that approved, get the six cent funding, five million dollars, then we find out we get the grant. How does that play into the grant?
So the way I envision this is we're going to eventually have to pick a, a, uh, we're in or out date, if you will, with the federal funding, where we're going to have to say, okay, we're not gonna, we're not going to keep waiting around, this project has to happen. It's scheduled for regular federal and state money in twenty-one and twenty-two. We'll need to pick a date collectively where we say, this is the day, this is our date that we can yank this project out before it's too late out of six penny, but once we do that, we got to be committed one way or the other. So we'll have to sit down, have those conversations if we're going down that six penny route, um, eventually, and, and hopefully pick that date. And I, I'm new to the six penny process. I wasn't here the last time that was done, so I'm learning, um, very quickly on how this works, and I still have a lot to learn. Um, and I think we're at a huge, huge, um, learning curve for everybody because I, from my discussions, you know, having Reed not part of the, the group anymore, and I, I think the lady that did the bonding isn't there anymore, and there's a lot of holes to fill in terms of knowledge on how this whole process will play out over the next eighteen months or so, and, um, I, hopefully that answers your question. We'll just have to pick a date that we have to decide which way we're going.
That's set with the six penny. Projects add up.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that, that's going to be a struggle.
Yep.
Siding, but forward.
Well, and that's what I, I really hope I stressed is that we understand it's a huge uphill battle, and there's no guarantees. Uh, we have to get a sponsor. We as a joint powers board can't sponsor it, so we would have to rely on you, the county commission, City of Green River, somebody to sponsor us, or a co-sponsorship of some sort is my understanding. And then we'd have to get commissioners' approval, we'd have to get the joint powers board of, or the joint powers board approval, and then you have to get the voters' approval. So if I, that's like, in my understanding, that's a condensed version of how this whole thing goes, and, and if, I know there's a lot of steps to it, but we want to make sure we're in the conversations now, because I think we can all agree that if this is going to be on the ballot in November, we got to get moving on it, or else we're going to get, we're going to be too late to make it happen, so.
Well, you're exactly correct. Just, um, to let everybody know that in the very near future, I did meet with, uh, Mayor Ross from Green River, and, um, we will be, um, sending a meeting with all the, um, um, entities in Sweetwater County, um, to meet and discuss, because you're right, I'm, we're here, and there's many projects out there also, but we have no idea what the projects are at this point. Uh, we're going to pull up a, a meeting together, uh, amongst the group to, um, hash, hash out what, um, we feel is, uh, viable and, um, create some, uh, timelines and, uh, be prepared prior to when we meet with the county commissioners to make the request. I know the City of Rock does a couple that we've been discussing, uh, amongst the council, but, um, there's no decision made at this point, so it's good to know that, uh, that's out there. We can have that. You know, before us as we move forward, there's nothing worse than, Councillor Zadi stated it, with the six penny projects, uh, the timelines are just intense. You know, you have to have, uh, preparations made and commitments made, and we start pulling that together, speak, um, as our liaison, uh, uh, Councillor West, uh, who's going to be serving on that committee, uh, he's, uh, he's also, um, uh, wondering what's going to come before him and how this is going to work out, so that, that is good to know. I think you covered everything from the meeting that, uh, Matt, that I had with you and, uh, which explained very well, and, um, it's, it's nice to see that this funding, uh, is at least available for aviation, for, uh, airports. In a time when, uh, everybody else's funding is down, it's nice to see some grant dollars. We can apply for. Any other question, comment? With, with that, I think that's going to be coming, um, before us here shortly, um, in that new business, but, um, makes sense. So impressive.
Thank you very much for the time and your continued, uh, support. It, it's, uh, it, it makes my job, uh, a lot easier when I have conversations like this and like what I had this morning at the commission meeting, being able to look at the common sense of what we're trying to do, and, and if it can work within your financial framework, trying to make it happen, and really appreciate Matt and the mayor and everybody's time trying to work through all these issues with us. Uh, we, we got a bright future ahead of us up at the airport. We just need to get through a couple years of some pain, if you will, on the funding, but we have a, we have a very bright future and, and even brighter one after today. We have some exciting news to share in the coming weeks that, um, on a big development at the airport. I can't talk anymore about it today, but I got news today at two o'clock that we're moving forward with a big, uh, big development opportunity at the airport, and, uh, it's going to make a big difference for the airport going forward and the community, so.
Well, and we appreciate your, your willingness and your, your, um, aggressive, uh, research and looking and applying for, that, that's, that's what these have done, and, uh, we thank you for that.
We do.
There's no further questions, so we'll move on. Appreciate that. I would, um, when you get a chance to maybe mail that spreadsheet. Okay.
Happy to do it. I'll send it to everybody, and if you have any questions when you get in there and mess with it, call me. I'll come meet with you and come meet with me, whatever, we can play with it, but it's pretty self-explanatory, so, thank you.
Thank you, Devin. I'm just going to move us on to the petition section of our agenda. I would ask, is there anyone out there today wishing to address the council on any issue whatsoever? This would be your time to do so. Anyone? Okay, hearing none. We are going to close the petition section of our agenda and move on to officers and staff reports. Councillors, we have the Health Insurance Fund recap for June two thousand nineteen and the Rock Springs Renewal Fund Financial Statements for May two thousand nineteen. I'd entertain a motion to approve the officer and staff reports placed on file.
So moved, your honor?
We do have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this can bring us to the council committee and board reports. Uh, item number one, the Main Street Board Meeting Minutes of June tenth, two thousand nineteen, and number two, the Rock Springs Historical Museum Board Meeting Minutes of June fifth, two thousand nineteen. I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve the council committee and board reports and place on file. First, are there any other, um, council committee or board reports?
Your honor.
Councillor Zadi.
Not a really committee report, but I did want to, um, welcome everybody from really around the world to the National High School Finals Rodeo that's taking place, the events complex in Rock Springs. Um, the number of people it brings in and the economic impact for the community is tremendous, and I think we all can see that. We're driving around town, I think it was funny, this weekend as we're driving around, my son, who's twelve, out of the blue says, you can tell when the rodeo's in town, because everybody's got a duly everywhere. It kind of made me laugh, because everywhere we went, there was a duly, and you'd count every single one of them, so. You know, it does show that, um, these people are out there, they're spending money in our community, and they're really, um, enjoying what Rock Springs has to offer. I talked to a number of families, a couple in Edel Chicago, and they were very appreciative for the facilities we have here and for the community itself, the people and what was offered, and they actually were surprised at how many things and what there is to do around. I think a lot of us end up taking for granted and don't realize, but we hear that from somebody in Washington State saying, there's a lot to do here, and Rock Springs has a lot to offer, that makes me feel pretty proud, um, what we've accomplished here, so. Thank you.
Uh, Councillor Zadi, well said, and, um, I thought it was mandatory that you had to have, uh, a placard with a number on your back to go eat at one of the restaurants, but that shows how many people are out there. Uh, a couple other, um, items just in, uh, uh, the committee and board reports. First, great job to, um, the International Days Committee and all the volunteers, uh, another job well done. I think they, they announced over six thousand people attended, sixty-five hundred, I believe, um, just.
Record here.
Just a great day, um, for everybody to, to get out and enjoy, uh, International Days. Um, thank you for all you guys do, and, uh, we appreciate that. Uh, get out and enjoy the rodeo, and, uh, thank you for all those that got out and, uh, uh, took part in International Days as well. Um, any other reports? Um, I will tell you also that the, the big flag will be up Friday morning. I did make contact with Rotary. They had some issues with the weather, uh, the wind, but if all goes well, um, um, they plan to put the flag up Friday and run it until the weather gets bad, so, um, that would be good. Um, with that, I'd entertain a motion to, um, approve the council committee and board reports and place on file.
So moved.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed. This can bring us to correspondence section of our agenda. Councillors, uh, you have a list of four items on correspondence. Um, if there are no questions, um, or discussion, I would entertain a motion to approve all the correspondence and place on file.
So moved.
Uh, we do have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show no opposed, and this is going to move us on to the Bills and Claims section. Item number one, the Bills and Claims for June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen.
Your honor.
Councillor Wendor.
I move to approve the Bills and Claims for June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Uh, Councillor, we do have a motion to approve the Bills and Claims for June thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the Bills and Claims for July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Your honor.
Councillor Wendor.
I move to approve the Bills and Claims for July sixteenth, twenty nineteen.
We do have a motion to approve the Bills and Claims for July sixteenth, two thousand nineteen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Record show no opposed. This is going to move us. Record show, no opposed. This is going to move us on to item number three, the salaries for July 8th, 2019.
Your Honor, I move to approve the salaries for July 8th, 2019.
We do have a motion to approve the salaries for July 8th, 2019. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stay.
Let the record show, this is going to bring us on to the new business items on our agenda. Councilman, item number one, the approval of the 2019 OPB actuary evaluation report updated for the provisions of GASP statement number 75. I believe you received the explanation from Alex and Matt. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve this approval.
We do have a motion to approve this approval. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number two, the request from the Engineering and Operations Department for permission to fill a vacant equipment mechanic position at the vehicle maintenance shop. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf.
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request from Engineering and Operations. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number three, the request from Parks and Recreation Department for permission to bid golf simulator. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, I have a question.
Councilman Zadi.
I guess it's still one I brought up during the budget process when it first came up. I know, I think we budgeted 30,000 for this.
Fifty.
Fifty. And with, and I know departments and that, we cut a lot of funding and that in the rec department has been cut to the staffing and everything. The idea behind this is that it will generate revenue and I believe, who said it was about two years, it would pay for itself. How do we come to that, to the determination that this will pay for itself in two years and start generating profit or revenue? What's the?
I believe what, what recreation did was modeled it after a similar facility in North Dakota. Dave, want to elaborate on that?
We ran. Looked to other facility. Argue for. Purple. We started. We thought some. I am allowed to, you know, hear that. So we talked. And we felt we needed some. Or. To. With that. Do we really? To. To say. Using. Half hours. So it's all. Fifty. E-rig. Six period. So that. Some of them. Definitely. Hell. Be double. So. Yeah.
Your Honor? Councilman Savage?
We need to, I, I don't like speaking into the microphone either, but we need to, we need to do that when we're talking.
I have had a lot of complaints about the department heads not getting close enough. We're just talking.
Could you repeat all that stuff? Yeah. It is, it is an issue and if you'd speak closer, but I think it's been well received and it, and it does generate revenue. This request is basically a request for permission to bid. Maybe we see that come under. I, we don't know what's out there at the point, but by all means, I think it's definitely an avenue that we can recover some revenue in recreation and hopefully grow that, that program.
Yes, I, say, Your Honor, I'm sorry. Just kind of doing the math quickly here. That's straight play, 104 days straight. Twenty-five hundred hours at $20 a minute. So I just kind of wanted to see, kind of put that together and it doesn't, I just wanted to see kind of where we were and how that came out because it doesn't work out really. Thank you. Dave, is this a mobile?
Uh, no. A lot of this is going to be built. I mean, it physically could be moved, but it's going to be for the most part built into one place in the racquetball court at the Civic.
So that's where.
Yes.
And I believe the goal from what JJ looked into this, what they do in North Dakota is they created city leagues, if you will, and it was also open to the public. So you'd have through the wintertime months or the summer, you'd have leagues that would pay to, pay to play, if you would, and create teams and utilize the facility.
I'd like to say one other thing. We replaced golf carts last time. Pleasantly surprised how that worked out. Generated revenue.
Yeah, and I think that was our projection that they would sell that. If I could just clarify when I ran the math. So at $20 per hour, used half of the hours available at the Civic Center, which is 40 hours, and then multiplied that by 26 weeks, half a year, that's $20,000, which is right at 40% of cost of that, became $1,000. Again, we think it's absolutely reachable a week, pay for that, two. That's definitely our goal. We also plan to promote this thing. I mean, we're going to have leagues, we're going to have golf leagues in the winter. We're just not going to open it to the public. We have programs at Civic Center, you know, leagues, you know, little different games that go on and closest to the hole on a day. Any of a number of things, program that unit out where it's actually being utilized as opposed to just something there and hoping somebody takes an objection, asks.
Well, and at this point, we have a vacant racquetball court, a space, if you will, that doesn't utilize.
Your Honor?
Councilman Schalata?
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Appreciate the discussion. Item number four, the request from the Rock Springs Chamber of Commerce and the Sweetwater Economic Development Coalition for permission to use the Chamber Park for a vendor food truck fair on August 24th, 2019, and a fall yard sale on September 7th, 2019. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request from the Rock Springs Chamber.
We do have a motion to honor this request from the Chamber. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, item number five, request from the Southwest Wyoming Regional Airport to encumber fiscal year 2019 budgeted funds of $133,333 for potential local match on Federal Aviation Administration grant relating to the commercial terminal modernization project. This encumber, encumbrance would be funded from cost savings on the SkyWest Minimum Revenue Guarantee subsidy, actual payments for fiscal year 2019 being less than budgeted. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Item number six, which was your revision, was the request from the Sweetwater Events Complex for permission to hold a public display of fireworks during the Wyoming's Big Show on August 2nd and 3rd, 2019 at approximately 10:00 PM at the Sweetwater Events Complex. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Upstate.
Let the record show, item number seven, the request from the Sweetwater Events Complex for five malt beverage permits for Wyoming's Big Show on July 30th through August 2nd from 4:00 PM to 11:00 PM and August 3rd from noon to 11:00 PM at the Sweetwater Events Complex. And before we go into a vote, Chief Pacheco, I appreciate your follow-up on this and working with Larry. I believe you are, you're okay with what, what came out of those meetings?
Your Honor, Council, yes. We did last year. Came to consensus, applied a map, compared to all, made some steps towards.
Appreciate that. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Schalata?
Move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to approve this request. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed?
Upstate.
Let the record show, item number eight, the request from young and professionals of Sweetwater County for a malt beverage permit for the Blues and Brews Event on August 10th, 2019 from noon to midnight at Bunning Park. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Schalata?
I move to approve this request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item number nine, request from Blackrock Incorporated for seven liquor catering permits for the Sweetwater Downs horse racing events on August 23rd through the 25th and the 31st, September 1st, 2nd, and 8th, 2019 from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM at the Sweetwater County Events Complex. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Demas?
I re, I.
We do have a motion to honor this request from young and professionals. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? And item number 10, also a revision, request from the Wolf Den Bar for permission to extend their serving area for a poker chip run to support breast cancer research on August 24th, 2019 from noon to 9:00 PM. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve that request.
We do have a motion to honor this request. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And item number 11, the request from Good Times Incorporated for permission to extend their serving area for the Class of 1999 reunion on July 27th, 2019 from noon to 2:00 AM. Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Question.
Councilman Schalata?
I speak to Chief Pacheco. Stop. Is it, is this something?
Your Honor, Council, uh, and, and.
So do you have a problem with this, Chief?
I don't. Um, so. So. That I see in the area. So that would turn. So.
I think the reason for that in a lot of cases was because of why we did, we're timing it. So, because the bands that have been residential.
But this is Johnny Matt. So 2:00 AM probably is going in line with the bars closing at 2:00 AM. I wouldn't know that.
Yeah.
I'm looking at it.
Yes, sure.
First, Larry.
Good question, though. Well, Council, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion, Your Honor, to approve this request.
Okay, we do have a motion to approve the request from Good Times. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, this is going to bring us to the resolution section of our agenda. Counselors, Resolution 2019-107, first up.
A resolution accepting and approving an updated job description for the position of senior court clerk at pay grade 46 for the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselors, this is one that we reviewed with the hiring committee. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman Schalata?
Move to approve Resolution 2019-107.
Counselors, we do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-107. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Zadi?
Yes.
Schalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wendorf? Yes. Demas? Yes. Merrickomo?
Yes. Item number two, Resolution 2019-108.
A resolution accepting and approving a revised job description for the position of senior administrative assistant to the chief of police, revising the duties and responsibilities, changing the job title to executive assistant chief of police at pay grade 53 for the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming.
Counselors, this was the second one reviewed by the committee. What's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilman West?
I could just quickly clarify since I am a part of that committee. There were a few questions. I think a couple of us have received some phone calls in regards to this one. But I just kind of wanted to explain it a little further since it's a little bit limited on our agenda. But I believe the chief of police researched areas that were similarly paid as far as our, our officers, this position. And that's kind of where that basis for the, the pay grade came from, although it looks to be quite significant going from a 44 to a 53. The salary itself is about a $250 increase a month. And it, just coincidentally, the top out of pay grade 44 is the bottom or the base of 53. With the additional duties and everything that this position is carrying, I felt that was justifiable and the committee felt the same.
Well stated. Any other discussion? Counselors, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve Resolution 2019-108.
Counselors, we do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019-108. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Schalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wendorf? Yes. Demas? Yes. Zadi?
Yes.
Merrickomo?
Yes. Resolution 2019-109.
A resolution accepting and approving an agreement for artist service with Wooden Chip Productions and authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk to execute said agreement on behalf of the city of Rock Springs.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor?
Councilwoman Wendorf?
I move to approve Resolution 2019-109.
Counselors, we do have a motion to approve 2019-109. Is there a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor Savage?
Counselor Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Merricomo?
Yes. Item number four, Resolution 2019 dash 110.
A resolution authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, and Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming to execute said right-of-way easement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor?
Councilwoman Wendor?
I move to approve Resolution 2019 dash 110.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019 110. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second has been called. Roll call.
Counselor West?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Merricomo?
Yes. Item number five, Resolution 2019 dash 111.
A resolution to get, to grant a right-of-way easement to Sweetwater County, authorizing Timothy A. Como as mayor of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming, Matthew L. McBurnett as city clerk of the city of Rock Springs, Wyoming to execute said right-of-way easement on behalf of said city.
Counselors, what's your pleasure?
Your honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve, approve Resolution 2019 dash 111.
We do have a motion to approve Resolution 2019 111. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Wendor?
Yes.
Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Merricomo?
Yes. Counselors, this is gonna bring us to ordinance section of our agenda, which we have one ordinance on the third reading, ordinance 2019 dash 14.
In ordinance amending Articles 16-1, 16-3, 16-4, 16-5, 16-6, and 16-7 entitled subdivision regulations for the purposes of adding definitions and clarifying language with regard to subdivisions.
Counselors, third reading, what's your pleasure?
Your honor?
Councilman West?
Move to approve ordinance 2019 dash 14.
We have a motion to approve ordinance 2019 14 on third reading. Is there a second?
Second.
Second's been called. Roll call.
Counselor Demus?
Yes.
Zadi?
Yes.
Shalata?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Wendor?
Yes.
Merricomo?
Yes. And council, with no further business to come before this governing body, the meeting is adjourned.